Did I get announced?
Oh.
You ready? All right. Gibby, you ready?
I'm ready.
Uncle Fred, you ready?
Yep.
All right, buddy. Like to call this meeting to order, please? If you'd all please rise. Pastor Russ Wind will lead us in prayer this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day that you've given us here in southwest Florida. And now we ask your blessings to be on our meeting here today and give the council wisdom, guidance, and understanding as we look at the agenda that's before us. And we give you all the praise in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Councilman Greg DeWitt, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
In honors, Ms. Mayor. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Here.
Councilman DeWitt. Councilwoman Carr.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Present.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Great. Well, good evening, everybody. How are you? We are going to start tonight with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. Councilwoman Simons, welcome.
What's with the new microphone? Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody, Happy Hanukkah, everything that's coming up. We're in the beautiful season of lights. I'm here to just say my farewell to our fair and lovely Councilwoman Janet Martin because I understand she's leaving our community and that's the only reason I came here tonight. Oh, hi, Dawn. I'll say hi to her, too. It's kind of old home night here. I see a couple of familiar faces. I want to thank Janet for challenging me in ways that made me a better person when I was on city council. Janet, I want to thank you for caring about Benita Springs. You jumped into your new community with both feet and we all got wet. I want to thank you for being just a wonderful person who continues to serve others, and I know you will do that in your new community. I thank you, Janet, for making Benita Springs and the world a better place. Of course, you're from New Jersey. We do that from there. I want to also know that the crowd here will know that she's moving out of town, and I know that her new home will have a great new asset. They will have a lovely new neighbor, and we'll be missing you. Thank you, Janet.
Thank you very much. Very nice. Welcome.
Welcome, for the record, Kathy McGrath. And I can't follow that speech very well. I'm just going to say Janet is family to me. Everyone knows that, and I'm really, really going to miss her. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
A member of the public.
Next. Anybody want to go ahead? Greg? Anybody? 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 Welcome, my friend.
Welcome. Thank you, sir. Point of personal privilege, this is not on the agenda, so may I continue?
Yes.
Some of you may be wanting--
No, actually, no.
Some of you may be wondering why I'm not sitting on the dais.
Sorry, you're not sitting on the dais.
I come here tonight to let you know that I've resigned my spot as District Two. I announced it two weeks ago, three weeks ago, thinking that I had till April. Things moved a lot quicker than I would have hoped, that I could have anticipated. Since that, Monday night, the fire chief has tendered his retirement and is staying on only as an advisory position. So I've been promoted to the ranks of fire chief at the Benita Springs Fire Department. So with that, I have to resign my seat in order to get someone to run for reelection or for election in District Two. It's a sad day for me. I've had nothing but good times as District Two representative. As the mayor and I have talked many times, you know, at the end of the day, we may not agree, but we're still friends. And everybody on the dais and everybody at the city I consider my friend, my colleague, and my brother and sister. So I just want to thank you for the times I've had. Like I said, this is not goodbye. This is just until next time because I promise you, not to quote Arnold, but I will be back when I'm done. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Janet. She's the one that started me on this journey. She asked me when she was termed out if I would be interested in it. First, I was a little reluctant, but now, after doing it for almost four years, three and three-quarters years, I wouldn't trade it for the world. It's one of the best experiences I've ever had. Never was, never thought I'd be a politician, never thought I'd be in politics. But you know what? I'm proud to say that I was on this council with all of you, and I'm proud to say I represented the District Two as best to my ability and the city of Benita Springs every single day that I have been on the council. And I will tell you this right now, I will continue to do it until my last breath that I'm in Benita Springs. So thank you, guys, very much for--I can't repay you from what I've learned and the people I've met and what I've done for the city. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Greg. Well-- And Greg, I'll have you know, I'll have you know, on short notice, because I got called about an hour ago, on short notice, the best I could do--
Uh-oh.
Was to give you my Florida tie, buddy.
Oh. I'll wear it with honor, sir. Love you, brother.
Welcome, Rick.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'm Rick Steinmeier. I'm going to tie this in with the tree advisory board. Lee County got themselves a new arborist, Bob DeBrock, and he's replaced about 25 of our palm trees on Hickory Boulevard that were hanging over the road that possibly the coconuts would fall down and stuff. So he's been replacing them with foxtails, which are a little, they look like a royal And as far as the zoning board, that's a very important position. I don't know if a two-year or four-year term makes a big, a lot of difference. Most of the people stay on there because they like it and do a good job. I don't know whether we want to tie up somebody for four years. And I want to thank the mayor for his help in rattling Lee County's cage to get the sidewalk fixed on Hickory Boulevard. It took me four months and it took me two phone calls to the mayor, and the next day they were there, and the next day there were six trucks and a bunch of people, and they passed the really dangerous spots on the sidewalk. So you all come down Hickory Boulevard, you got a safe sidewalk and shade with all the new trees, and thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are doing.
Thank you, Rick. Great to have you here. Other members of the public. Welcome, Dawn.
Dawn Konsekowski, for the record. I'll be sharing the law and the facts with you during the public hearing on the EAR. I just want to explain why you keep hearing from the public on this matter. The reason this EAR is still before city council after four years is because the normal process was hijacked in order to accomplish an additional purpose not required by the state of Florida. The process was hijacked by some in order to eliminate what they considered traps found in our comprehensive plan, which was stated on the record before the LPA. The problem is that what some consider traps, the residents considered protections. These protections exist to protect life and property in the coastal high hazard area. Traps that they decided to eliminate during the EAR process, hoping the residents would be asleep and not notice. We were not asleep then and we're not asleep now, and we will not allow anyone to confuse a clear-cut issue. We've been promised that there will be no weakening of our comprehensive plan by eliminating protections within the coastal high hazard area. The coastal high hazard area policies do not affect the Old Forty-One downtown redevelopment because it was exempt from the provisions that limits density and intensity of use. Therefore, Old Forty-One development is a non-issue when voting on mandated amendments to the citizens' comprehensive plan. So please listen closely to the law and the facts that will be put on the record during the public hearing and compare to the empty, confusing explanations that are found within the staff report in the packet for the advertised public hearing limited to state mandated amendments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dawn. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none? We are going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your preference?
We got one more.
Oh, welcome.
How are you doing?
Sorry I didn't see you over there.
I didn't know if anyone else was going to stand up.
So my name is Mark Anthony Dietz. I'm here to speak on the schooling subject. Do you guys have any control over what goes on with the schooling district in Lee County or no?
This is Public Comment Section, but, and it's not really a dialogue of exchange, but I appreciate you being here very, very much. We work with the Lee County School Board, but they have their own budget, their own staff, their own board of directors, but we do work with them, yes.
Okay, because I wanted to, there's a lot of stuff in the school system that shouldn't be allowed to this day over privacy issues with students and how the sterile faculty takes care of their students and how, what they teach them and how they interact with the students is just wrong. There's a lot of stuff going on at that school that they're not allowed to do. They're trying to take kids' phones, they're making them write into contracts that they are allowed to have options with instead of getting in trouble for their phones. They're making them write down on the contract, so then they are legally obligated to take their phones in school. And so the kids think that this is the only way to go every single time. They don't understand that they have a whole code of conduct showing every single reason that they can have another ISS, OSS, a talk with your parents, stuff like that. They don't allow that. And then another thing that they do is that when you're in detention, they try to take your phone away and they say that if you don't have your, if, they, they're allowed to take your phone and put it into a box with your number on it and you have the number for it. But I read in the code of conduct, they have no rules, no obligations to anything on that for detention unless you sign the contract. I never signed that contract, and then they told me that my detention would never count if I kept showing up without my, if I'd never gave them my phone. But I never signed the contract, and I said I read in the code of conduct that you guys could never do this. Then they said my detention would never count, so I left. Thus, me getting more in trouble. And I was only running up for ever being on my phones. I was never late to class. It was always my phones. And I was getting in trouble for being in class, in an avid class, college readiness class, for being on my phone for business because I, my dad owns a landscaping, or business, and we have a nursery at our house. So my phone number was on the sign, and at school, I would get text messages and calls every day. I've talked to her. She's my college readiness class. She knows my plan and how I was going to go throughout everything in schooling. And I was always really good in her class. I never, never disrespected a teacher because I realized what they're there for is to help us learn and to help educate us. But in the school system nowadays, right now, we're in a new education where kids are being put with phones in their hands at five years old, and it's just insane that the education system won't even allow you to look up the answers that are on your phone when they're the same thing in the book. It's the same, it's the same thing as two plus two equals four, find that in your book, oh, you found it on your phone, well, now your test is wrong. But that's not the whole subject, is that phones should not always be used in school, but they should be allowed to be used as a way of free education. We're in a system where, where kids are paying to go to school every single day. They're tired of going to school, they're burnt out, and all these teachers are burnt out. They're not getting paid enough, they don't care enough. So I'm just trying to say that what they were doing to me and how they treated me whenever I tried to change classes, the very first week of school, it was terrible. It was so messed up. It was, I was being disrespected at the school that I was trying to change my classes with. And I can't speak that myself. It was, I was the only person. I know a lot of kids that are in my situation that had the same thing happen to them and all the injustices that happened at school. It's just crazy, and I liked it to be looked at because kids are just being stressed out nowadays, or they're being forced to be put in colleges when they don't have to go to colleges. Education is a beautiful thing, but I know so many kids, if you, if you look on The Ellen Show, two kids just got into Harvard and I think it was Yale, and then she said, oh, so what are you going to do in Harvard and Yale? She said, they said, I don't even know. I just wanted to go to Harvard so bad, and now I'm here, I don't know what to do. On live television, a kid said that. That's terrible. Every kid should have a passion, a reason to wake up every morning and not be burnt out and going to--
It's an exciting thing. It should be amazing. I just want it to be looked at.
Thank you very much. If you could leave us your name and phone number and email, that would be great, and we'll be following up with you, okay?
Where would I write that down?
Right, right over here with Matt Feeney.
Actually, Laura's going to get it.
Laura's going to get it in the back. All right. Thank you, sir. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Does that include you, Councilman Alex Grant?
Is this--
On agenda items?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Any other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none? We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your preference?
On the one thing?
On the one thing?
Yeah.
All right. Motion to approve? Is there, and there is a second? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. If Councilwoman Janet Martin could please come forward. Thank you. Picked them up myself. Got a great, got a great team. Welcome. So glad to have you here. On behalf of the city of Benita Springs, and I know you know how this works as well as anybody, this is a certificate of appreciation presented to Janet Martin in recognition of your dedicated service to the city of Benita Springs Tree Advisory Board. Your leadership and commitment in preserving our heritage, trees, and native plants, thereby enhancing the green spaces within our communities is invaluable to our city. 2016 to 2019, signed Mayor Peter Simmons, December 4th, 2019. And that is a hot off the press signature I might have not put on, 20 minutes ago. Thank you for all your service. Could you share a few words with us or? Don't want to put you on the spot by Will. How's that?
Okay. Thank you for this. I do appreciate it. You know, being on city council was, like Greg just said, it was something that I never saw coming. The opportunity happened, and it was one of the most wonderful things that I have accomplished. Family, basically, everyone here, we worked so hard to better our community, and, you know, we all have a passion for seeing something happen, and I was blessed to be able to do that, and then I thank you for allowing me to continue that by serving on the Tree Advisory Board. I want to thank Jane Swanson, our staff liaison, and then also me for her administrative work for helping us. It takes a village. And we've got a great tree board. Some of the members are here tonight. Thank you for coming, and they're going to continue my O to do some good things, so, yeah.
Thank you. We're going to miss you. We, like Greg said, goodbye for now.
For now.
And we'll see you again.
For now, thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. I apologize. If the members of the League of Women Voters could please come forward. Hello. Welcome. Hello, welcome. Great, well, on behalf of the city of Benita Springs-- Normally, I don't have this problem. If they can't hear me in the back, wow, okay. But on behalf of the city of Benita Springs, this is a proclamation for the League of Women Voters of Lee County, for your 70th anniversary, December 7th, 2019. Whereas the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Florida, was founded December 1949 and will be celebrating its 70th anniversary on December 7th, 2019. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Florida, is a nonpartisan organization, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government and always working on vital issues of concern, to be members of the public. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Florida, encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And whereas the League of Women Voters of Lee County, Florida, Education Fund, works to register voters, provide voters with election information through voter guides, as well as candidate forums and debates. Now, therefore I, Peter Simmons, Mayor, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Benita Springs, do hereby offer congratulations and thanks to the League of Women Voters on their 70th anniversary. Congratulations. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, December 4th, 2019. Great work. You're just getting started.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to invite you all to our meet and greet this Saturday, where we will be at the Collaboratory, the Southwest Community Foundation Collaboratory in Fort Myers. We will be celebrating the meet and greet, our elected officials, where we thank you for all your service, for your constituents in your area, and also our 70th anniversary. And personally, in 1988, I was honored and induced, inducted into the Who's Who of American Women, and I will be receiving a lifetime achievement award for Who's Who.
Wow, very good.
That was a shocker.
That's great. That's fantastic.
So thank you very much.
Wonderful. You're very welcome. Ma'am, would you like to share a few words?
Just repeat what we've said about the League. We are nonpartisan, nonpartisan. We do not support any candidates, and differently from what we're hearing a lot of these days. It's really kind of pleasant not to be hearing that in our own meetings.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations for all your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are moving on to a presentation from Florida Gulf Coast University regarding draft language for proposed comprehensive plan amendments related to the downtown district. This is green sheet 19-12-387.
So I'm here to present an overview of some proposed changes to the comprehensive plan for the downtown district. So, and again, the reason why we're presenting this early, we would not be moving to discuss this formally with you until January, but this just gives you an overview of some of the proposed changes so we can seek your feedback on what those might look like. So just as a reminder, the direction that we were provided by council and the LPA was to fast-track downtown so that that could be something that, where you would be able to adopt the form-based code, and the idea was that those two items would go together, essentially. So in the language, what we've considered is the downtown vision language, which we talked with you about the last time, and the generalized overlay map for the downtown district, and then maximum densities, as well as looking to the form-based code for implementation. So that was where we started with the language. And just as a reminder, this is the map that you would, as you're working through the land development code, the map that would accompany the comprehensive plan. So this would be in your land development code. This is where the specific language would live, so to speak. So just as a reminder that that's, you've got still a lot of regulation with downtown. And this is a slide that we had shared with you the last time, so this is not new. But what I really want to turn to you and talk about is the proposed strike-through language and additions that we've looked at in terms of your comprehensive plan. So we referenced the land development code for the form. We looked at renaming the area from the Old Forty-One redevelopment area to simply downtown district. It adds the vision for the downtown district. It adds a downtown district map, general, as we talked with you last time, for council direction. It establishes maximum density and eliminates the bonus densities, and then strikes through outdated provisions for the sub-districts. The previous comprehensive plan went into significant detail on sub-districts in your downtown, so much of the strike-through is related to those, that specific detail. So other related elements, of course, are going to need a couple changes. The housing element, what the changes there really were related to maximum and bonus density, and so that was consistent, made consistent with future land use element. Transportation element, pretty much the only change was related to renaming it to the downtown district. The conservation coastal management element, the amendments there are allowing for more flexibility in the downtown district in terms of density, density transfer, and also reflecting a name change to the downtown district. So the expected timeline here is that we would, after we get your feedback this evening, meet with the LPA January 9th. We would come back to council for transmittal January 15th. What that would put you at, is because these are expedited amendments, what that would put you at is an adoption around February 19th of next year. We would also, for the, for the optional amendments that may come next, we would propose public meetings around the 3rd wake of January. So there's opportunities for the public to have input in at least four different venues. That's the end of the presentation about downtown. You have the language in front of you. If there's comments that you would like to share now, questions that you have are available.
Counsel, Amy?
The presentation was good, and it reflects, I think, what we had talked about and given you direction. When I saw the green sheet, I could not follow what was in this green sheet because it seemed to me like it was the same as we had, we have a public hearing on, later on in the agenda, and it seemed like it was the same thing. Is that the case, that these two green sheets are the same?
No, the green sheet should not be the same. This should be a presentation. This was a, just a presentation.
The material--
Arlene or Derek? I'm sorry. That's okay, just for a second. Arlene or Derek?
I don't know which one.
It's on, well, there should be two--
Which one does it look like?
It's 1912-386 and 1912-367. It looks the same to me, so. I'm comfortable with your just saying this is what we're going to do, but I was so confused when I was doing this. I just want to clarify in my own mind if this is supposed to have some of that language that you just talked about or not.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yes. So what was behind the green sheet in the future land use element had the proposed language for downtown. So because you have not yet adopted the state-required amendments, the state-required amendments were highlighted in yellow, and the downtown amendments were not highlighted in yellow. It was just underlined.
So then when we look at it further on in the agenda, those yellow things are the same, correct?
Yes.
All right. So I was, I, that part--
So it appears very similar because we could not presume that those would be adopted tonight.
It helped me, I felt totally confused when I looked at these. So you've clarified it, and I totally concur with whatever you set up here because that was our direction, and I'm pleased with that direction. So thank you for clarifying that for me. And, and this--
No, the green sheet should not be the same. This should be a presentation. This was a, just a presentation.
The material.
Arlene or Derek? I'm sorry. That's okay, just for a second. Arlene or Derek?
I don't know which one.
It's on, well, there should be two.
Which one does it look like?
It's 1912-386 and 1912-367. It looks the same to me. So, I'm comfortable with your just saying, this is what we're going to do. But I was so confused when I was doing this. I just want to clarify in my own mind if this is supposed to have some of that language that you just talked about or not.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Yes. So, what was behind the green sheet in the future land use element had the proposed language for downtown. So, because you have not yet adopted the state-required amendments, the state-required amendments were highlighted in yellow, and the downtown amendments were not highlighted in yellow. It was just underlined.
So, then when we look at it further on in the agenda, those yellow things are the same, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, I, that part I...
So, it appears very similar, because we could not presume that those would be adopted tonight.
It helped me. I felt totally confused when I looked at these. So, you've clarified it, and I totally concur with whatever you set up here, because that was our direction, and I'm pleased with that direction. So, thank you for clarifying that for me. And this one does not include, we had like a, some kind of a statement from the state that said we had to update our water supply. Where is that?
That's in the next item that we have under the state amendment.
Because we've had like three addendums.
Yes.
And that's why we're kind of confused, but thank you.
And all the addendums, you're clear on those?
Yes, they're in for the second part.
Because I'm not sure that I am. So, I just, and I said it at the last meeting, I just want to make sure we're looking at what the state of Florida is asking for, and just keeping it where that is. Then, we can have a conversation about what the recommendations are. Does that make sense?
So, to clarify, Mayor, this presentation...
I know it's a presentation, but I'm just...
But that is optional, and that's for the downtown. It is not the state mandated, required changes. That's if we would want to move forward with the form-based code, you would have to review these.
Understood, understood. But I'm just stating that early, so I want that to be clear. There's confusion on the council. There's been additional addendums that aren't necessarily straightforward and clear. So, I just wanted to state that. So, thank you. Counsel, anything else? Fred?
I think the area of density really needs to be explored.
Yeah, Fred, you got to speak up.
I think that the area of density needs to be explored in considerable depth, to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a box to where something that comes in in the bamboo village, for example, can't be done because we did this, or other projects that are on the, on the books, so to speak. Yes.
I agree.
Laura?
I was having the same issue with, you know, maximum density. Is that in stone? And that needs to be really clarified, because what if, like Councilman Forbes was saying, we get an offer, but it's fabulous, and then we have all these restrictions, and they say, no way, and walk away. So, that is a concern, because the value of the property is contingent on what one can do there. And if we're limiting and saying, this is what has to go there, well, I kind of feel then put your money up where your mouth is, because we're telling them what to do.
So, I'm going to turn to Jay Sweet. Jay has been engaging this discussion about density with DPZ related to the form-based code. So, do you want to respond to the, that density issue?
That's, it's a very, not only fair, but very good question to ask, because one of the concerns we had, as we've been going through this, is what is that magic number of density? And so, every land use, use that we have in our conference plan has a maximum density. And so, in this case, the idea was to go with the maximum that we have on anything, which would be 20 units per acre, and that the regulating plan would actually set the standards by which how it would become forward. But by doing that, that gives you the maximum flexibility, and we'll use the bamboo parcel as an example, by having it one color on the comp plan, we're not now constraining it to, it has to be commercial, has to be residential, has to be a hotel, like some, like the preview, the current plan is. It would have the flexibility of the regulating plan. The regulating plan will be coming to you. I was having conversations as late as yesterday afternoon with DPZ, as they're putting the regulating plan together. We're sticking with the transect, the way that you've seen it so far. No surprises, but the important factor of this is, by keeping it all one color in the comp plan, if you want to change something, you can make the change in the LDC, which does not require going back to the state again. So, for the downtown, if you want the maximum flexibility, the idea was to have it be the downtown district, rather than the separate sub-districts in the comp plan, so that you have that maximum flexibility. If you feel 20 units per acre is too low, we can obviously have that discussion and increase it. The question then becomes, you know, what do you find is an appropriate density? And DPZ doesn't have a suggestion specifically, and one of the reasons they don't is that they believe that the form, the height, the lot coverage self-regulates in many ways what you can get on the property, because people aren't going to buy, or rent, or occupy a space if they can't have certain amenities, whether it's a single place to park a car, whether it's a pool, whatever those amenities are that draw them, if it's residential. On the other hand, for commercial, we didn't want to get into the situation either, where we've banned somebody from having the commercial, because as great as the residential is, which is a key component to make the downtown work, I think everybody agrees, all the studies that have been done show that, the ability to attract the proper commercial activities that enhance the residential is equally as important. And so, we wanted to have the maximum flexibility, especially your, the city's out marketing the property now, and we wanted to have the maximum flexibility in that, so that it gives the city opportunity to get the best result for the city. And so, that's, that's the reason this approach has gone forward, and we are talking to DPZ. We will be coming back to you with a regulating plan.
You're saying regulatory plan?
Regulating plan. So, you saw the plan that had a transect. That's the regulating plan. So, even though we say 20 units per acre, and we have all this acreage, it doesn't mean every acre is getting 20 units, because in the regulating plan, as you get close to the single family, the density drops down to six units per acre. But having the maximum flexibility of those units within the plan gives you the option to have the maximum flexibility of attracting not only business and residential development downtown, it also gives you the opportunity to make it happen quickly. And I think that's one of the questions that have been asked over, over the time. If we go back to the Terry Street Assembly Project, the complaint was how long it took to get everything written and processed and approved to the state, and is that going to kill the project, because how long it took? And what we're doing now is we've come up with a plan that, if adopted, will allow you to make all the changes locally, so that you can travel at your own speed, and not be constrained by the state.
Fred? Thanks, Jay. Fred?
I think that's great. The only thing, like on density, it, somewhere, if somebody builds smaller condo units, you can, you could obviously put more of those in to the same box as if you put bigger ones. And I just think that we need to look at that area, and also what's the translation between a home and a hotel room? And then if you do it that way, that you should, if it's a bigger home that you're using your density on, and they're going to build smaller hotel rooms, then they ought to get more hotel rooms. I just think we need to look at that.
That, we, the way it's set up, we could do that, correct?
No.
We don't have to do it by the medical.
So, that is something that needs to be addressed in the regulating plan specifically, and other, other places do it differently. Some call a square footage of a studio a half a unit. Some call a one-bedroom of a certain size, three-quarters of a unit, and then a two-bedroom and above, a unit. And so, there are examples we can do for that. And the idea is, is as we bring forth the regulating plan with DPZ's recommendations and ideas, that that's a discussion we need to have. And you are spot-on. There are many places where hotel rooms can't exceed a certain size, because then they become an apartment. And so, that people are working within the design criteria that we're trying to accomplish, rather than subverting it somehow.
Fred?
But if we, if we adopt this the way it's written, then how do we, don't we have to look at all that stuff and kind of get it figured up out front?
We, and I don't want to speak, because we need to submit everything to the state because that process, during that timeframe, we need to work all the details out of the regulating plan. And so, that's the reason for some of the workshops that we'll have to have on that regulating plan, to sit down with council and say, here's, here's what, here's what we want to do, here's what we think the best idea is. I think that there is...
When do you think that's going to be ready for us?
I don't know. I don't have the schedule. And DPZ, our next meeting with them is right just before Christmas, and then they're closed between Christmas and New Year, and we'll be meeting with them again right off first of the year. But I think we're queued up to move quickly. The question...
Move quickly?
Well, the question is going to be council's pleasure in a certain sense.
Quickly.
And, and a meeting schedule, and then whatever the advertising requirements are, toward the clerk and attorney on the advertising requirements.
Amy?
I recall that when we started down this path, that we had pictures. First of all, I think the maximum density is important. A figure called maximum density is important within that larger map of the downtown area, because that applies to everything in the, in the downtown district. And when we have the regulating plan, it will be distributed to take into account the effect on the neighbors. When we talked about this initially, I believe we had pictures, and I remember Fifth Avenue in Naples, and we said, what is the density down there? I think the density, my recollection, and correct me if I'm wrong, was a lot less than 20 units per acre for Fifth Avenue in Naples. And I think that's how we got, we start entertaining a number like 20 units per acre. That's not a small number. And it's definitely compatible with the notion that we're not supposed to, we are trying to limit the height in the downtown area to the original, what's down there now is, what, 65 feet or something?
Yeah.
And we have a prohibition in our comprehensive plan of 75 feet, so we don't really want to have towers, you know, high, high elevations down there because of the narrowness of Old 41. So, I think that that number is probably a good number. And if we move towards the form-based code, which is, I think, what we're trying to do, I think we could have a lot of flexibility in how we develop certain areas in there. So, I think we're going down the right track, and if somebody wants to dispute whether you want 20 units per acre or 25, I think 20 sounds pretty good. And I think if you could share with us other areas and what that density is, so we could see what it looks like, because what does 20 units mean to anybody, you know? So, I think you're on the right track, and I think it's flexible. I don't think it's inflexible. And form-based code is much more flexible than the Euclidean code that we have used in the past. So, I think we're doing our best here.
And...
Word of the day, Euclidean, by the way.
Very good.
And...
Is that the right term? I had to wring that out of my memory from two years ago.
Obviously, I'm not sure, but I think so.
I think it is Euclidean.
This is a, from my perspective, this is a very productive conversation we've just had, and that is, well, I think we're all on the same page of where we need to go, whether it's 19 units, 20 units, 22 units. That's a number that will be, because we haven't transmitted to the state, we haven't adopted an ordinance, that's a number that can change between now and the first part of the year. Your point is well-taken. We have had pictures in the past. We can, we can bring more photos and examples forward, and have, have the discussion as we go forward with this, even though it won't be in the comp plan, have the discussion about, is a studio a unit or is a half a unit? Those are discussions that we can have, so that we're clear by the time this goes forward and is submitted to the state.
Fred? Oh, sorry. Mike, and then Fred.
When do we have to lock in the number for density on, and does there have to be a number?
There, there needs to be a number, because of how it affects other elements.
Well, I believe, I think it's downtown Fort Myers took out density for a certain area. They don't have a...
Actually, I've got to look at what they, I'm reading in the news, because it doesn't make total sense. But part of what they've done is they've taken mud law colleges and say that doesn't count. So, I don't, I don't know they've taken density totally out.
I thought I'd heard downtown, they'd taken density out.
I, I need to check that.
They still have restrictions on the size of the box, but it's up to the developer what size units go in there, and I thought there was no max.
I will, I will, I will double-check on that.
Because I mean, you know, somewhere like Tokyo, yeah, they can rent out little closets to somebody, but you know, here, they're not going to go for something that's small. But the overall trend is smaller units now, in the 600, 700, you know, square foot size, so.
And check on Tokyo while you're at it.
Yeah. So, I think we may be hurting ourselves by putting in, you know, a 20-unit maximum, because with prices, I'm being told, are hovering roughly around a million dollars an acre downtown, is what people are asking. That's $50,000 per unit at 20, 20 units. So, that 50,000 is going into the selling price of the units.
So, what we can do, and I can make sure we have, when we come back with this, I mean, now that we've got the input that we really, really need, as we come back with this, that 20 unit can be changed as we go forward, lower, higher, however council desires, but we'll come back with some answers specifically about Fort Myers, and we'll come back with some examples. But I agree with you in, wholeheartedly in the concept, if you control the height, and you can, if you control the height, you control the parking, and you control the square footages, it self-regulates in so many ways.
And Jay, not to interrupt you, but Mike, and I'd also heard they got rid of the parking requirements, or altered the parking requirements, or did something with the parking. So, if you could look into that as well.
Yes, we'll do.
Don't forget Tokyo. Fred?
Well, no, there are two, two other things. I think it's key that we get into this, if you build a five or 600 square foot unit, that's a half a unit, or three-eighths, or whatever. We need that table. And the other thing is, I'm fine with the height, but I think, and I think we should have a minimum first floor elevation, unless there's parking under the building, which is in some of these proposals. But if you, let's just say arbitrarily, the height is 50 feet. If you can put, and right now, we're saying it can only be four stories or whatever in that area, if he can put five stories in there and have a good first floor, I think we ought to, that, I think that might be a good thing.
Amy?
Well...
Thank you, Fred.
I think this needs discussion, because I do think that we have to realize what we're talking about, especially along Old 41. And it is somewhat of a corridor already, and it will be, you know, we need to put some limits somewhere. If you want to limit it on the height, that's fine. If you want to limit it on the density, it seems to me like you are, have more flexibility with the maximum density, and then people could decide how, what the heights are, and so we could have low buildings and high buildings. Otherwise, we're going to have just a row of buildings all at the same height, which aesthetically, and it doesn't feel that good. We want it livable, you know? We really want to, and if you look at the pictures that we have of our vision of downtown, it's not what we're, you know, we, we have to, we have to do some of our regulation, so we end up with what we think we're going to get. So, I don't agree with Fred about the, you know, the five floors. I think that that's what we need DPZ to help us with, because I want it to look like our pictures. And, and I rely on the professionals to tell us what, what is the limiting factors. Maybe there are more than one limiting factors, and maybe Dr. Mannion can help us with that.
Thank you, Amy. Counsel, anything else at the moment, or, okay?
Just to wrap up, as we think about some of those, some of those issues that we've heard tonight, the, we were hoping, as we had presented before, that the form-based code and the comprehensive plan changes would come together at some point, because we want some, you'd have some assurance that there's a picture there, right? That there's, that the comprehensive plan changes, as well as the form-based code work properly together. So, if we sort of stick with this schedule, what we can look at is thinking about the transmittal January, and during that time, as Jay mentioned, work through the rest of the form-based code, because that's a quicker process. So, we would like still to adopt them together. Whether that's February 19th or another day is something that we can talk about, but, but that would be the goal, to have them adopted at the same time, if possible.
Counsel, anything else?
I do want to comment. I do think it's very important that we're, we're making kind of a general plan with the comprehensive plan. You know, our concept is in the comprehensive plan, and that the regulating plan is outside of that. I don't think we should, I don't think we can emphasize enough how important that is. That itself is a flexibility process. So, we're going in the right direction, because otherwise, just as you said, every time somebody wanted to do something that was a little different, they had to change the comprehensive plan or make this adjustment, and then they all also had to have the variations in the, in their, in their application. So, this, this will help there. We're, I'm looking forward to January 15th, we see some product here, but thank you for the effort.
I have a little bit of a concern for you to be successful, because...
I have a little bit of a concern for you to be successful because part of the council is saying, we don't want numbers, and part of the council is saying, we want a specific number. So I don't really know how you're going to do both, but...
I don't either.
Okay.
On the other hand, when we did do the one-on-ones about downtown, we did hear that there was a desire for maximum density as a number. So as the process goes forward, and I think as you also, as you see DPZ's form-based code, some of that will become more clear in terms of how these can work together. So like Amy's saying, maybe it is height and density, maybe it's height and form. Right now, right, I don't have an answer, but at the same time, it's something we can think about, knowing that we've understood what your goals are. And really, DPZ, I think, has the heavy lifting. The heavy lifting is not in the comprehensive plan. It's in the form-based code.
Do you at all talk to the folks that are marketing the property, the bamboo property?
That's, we have not...
Should they?
We could set up a call with CBRE and Dr. Banyan.
Like, has it been any, like, curiosity, and then what are their questions? And what are their concerns?
Then everybody's not working in a vacuum. They're working together. Fred?
Well, I think, I think we, council made an error, and I was part of it along with most everybody here. We were all...
Who was excluded, Fred?
We were, well...
Who got a pass on this one?
I don't know anybody.
Okay. None of us did, okay.
We had two options, a height or number of floors with minimum, maximum floor heights, and we went with an overall height and a limit of so many floors versus a, you can have a height and here's minimum, maximum floor heights, which gives you more floors depending on your floor-to-floor height. I think we went down the, I think we as a council, at least I did, I voted and agreed to something in hindsight, I think, was a mistake.
Because it ends up being too restrictive.
Pardon?
Because it ends up being too restrictive.
Yeah, because there, you, the floor-to-floor recommended heights that they had, the variance like for residential was something like eight to 12 or 14 feet. So if I go with a floor-to-floor or finished ceiling of eight feet, which is normal for residential, or if you're in a little more luxurious, 10 feet, and I got a height to work with of 50 feet, I can come up with more than a four-story building. That's what I'm trying to tell you. And I think, I think we went, I think we made an error in that why, that's my own personal opinion. You may not all agree with me. I'm saying I made it, and if I had to vote on it today, I wouldn't vote that way.
Agreed. I would change also.
But our picture does not have five floors. Our concept that we've been looking at for five, six years doesn't have five.
If you have a big enough, if you have big lots, you can handle a five-story. If you, all you have to do in the DPZ is you say you can't have more than so many floors if you have a lot of less than so many feet wide.
These are the, this would...
So they're not all going to be the same.
So we don't have to go to that details right now. We have to decide whether we want to regulate or don't, you know? Do we want to have some restrictions, or should you just say whatever the developer wants they should do? That's really the issue.
I think what Fred is saying, that we want to have something like a mold over, but we don't want to have it in cement. We want to be able to move the pegs around and the floors around, and nobody's going to build a bunch of buildings square in a row. I mean, because why would you want to live there? You want to have a restaurant, you want to have a dry cleaners. Well, but we'll see. Maybe somebody has already had some interest in the property, and we know where they're going.
And I do believe that the width of the lot will govern how many floors. We could even put that in the DPZ form-based code. That's words. That's easy done, so.
And Jay's reminded me that DPZ's thinking about a mid-January kind of workshop so that some of these issues can get more refined.
Shirets in this room generally, right?
Yeah, I think this does can be more of a workshop with you all because we need specific direction. And all of the comments that you've made have such validity, some go in different directions than others, but it's the final, how they get tweaked. You know, if a 50-foot lot can only have two stories, then maybe that's an answer. Density, you can control by form. Those are all things, and we'll, we will bring that back, some other examples. But the big thing is, is the guidance we need now so that the proper steps can be taken to get the comp plan ready so that when we do the regulating plan, they can be adopted at the same time, so the regulating plan is fully ready by the time we come back from the state on the comp plan.
And I would just ask one thing to Amy's point earlier, and Amy, I couldn't, the addendums, the addendums, the addendums, the addendums, the addendums. I get it's part of the process, but let's not do that next time if we can help it at all. Thank you.
That's for the other one.
Yeah, well...
I agree.
Anything and all the above. Thank you very much, Dr. Banyan. Jay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to mayor and council member items. Item A is to appoint a member to the City of Bonita Springs Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and Zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacancy on the board. This is green sheet 1912-376, and Meg, we had, who's have, who has filed?
It's right here. The green sheet has.
I know, but it just, if somebody could...
It is, there's two of them, names listed on the green sheet. It's Jeffrey, thank you, Jeremy Juffee, J-U-F-F-E, and Dawn Konikowski.
Okay. I know Dawn's here. Is Jeremy here? I was going to let each person get up and say hello. Dawn, do you want to get up and say hello?
Yeah.
I don't see Jeremy, but if Jeremy is watching or listening.
Hello.
Hello.
Dawn Konikowski. I would love to be on your zoning board. I understand zoning. I understand the comp plan. I'm a developer up north, and I would love to help with the volunteer to help out with the city, and I guess that's all.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. And we do this by ballot, correct? I mean, I'm happy to make a nomination, but what's, counsel, what's your preference? Or Meg, or Arlene, what's our preference?
What's your preference?
It's your preference. You have done it previously by ballot, but you've also made nominations.
And the ballots are public, so it's, either way, it's, you know, certainly public record. Counsel, what is your preference?
Ballot.
By ballot? Okay. If we could draw some...
Can I just ask Dawn a question?
Sure.
Hi. So are you open to sitting down and listening to how, like, you're concerned with something that you don't need to be concerned with, and you keep going, no, because it's already taken care of? Are you open to listening to the staff explain to you how your concerns have been addressed?
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
You keep, you write about how we're putting something into the plan that we don't need to, that we're not following code properly?
That things are being changed that don't need to be?
Uh huh.
Yes.
Okay. So are you willing to at least sit down and understand what is going on?
I'm willing to look at the law and make sure that it's being followed.
Uh huh.
That's, that's the job of people on the zoning board, on the planning board, on this board, to follow your laws. And yes, I will follow the city's laws.
Great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're just waiting.
Well, I, can I, I nominate Dawn? Is that how we can do it?
I'll certainly second that, even though we're going to vote.
Okay.
I guess we're going to vote.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's fine. No, no, it's absolutely fine.
Less paper.
Yeah, less paper. That's true.
And no more colored paper. No more color copies. Are limited.
We just do a roll call on this?
At this point, I'm going to say yes. There's been a motion and a second for Dawn Konikowski.
Can we just say the name of our...
Yes, there's been a motion and a second for Dawn Konikowski. Is anybody opposed? Okay, I'm going to actually take a roll call vote anyway. There's been a motion and a second for Dawn Konikowski. Roll call, please.
Meg?
Meg? Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
And we'll do it. Why don't we go ahead and fill out the ballots anyway so there's a public record? And please put your name on it, council members. Thank you. Dawn, congratulations.
Thank you.
Here.
Going to move on to item nine, which is the first reading of the following zoning ordinance.
Okay, we have two zoning ordinances for you tonight. Both are public hearings. The first one is zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, approving application PD 19-60292-BOS, amending an existing industrial development, plan development, county zoning rezoning resolution number 98-071 as amended to expand the excavation limits and extend the termination date for the existing mine consisting within the state permits for a property of approximately 1,268 acres located at 25501 Bonita Grand Drive, Bonita Springs, Florida, 34134, providing for an effective date. Don't know why this is listed as no public comment allowed. On the green sheets, it is listed as a public hearing.
Absolutely.
I believe at least one representative from the property owner is here. This item was not heard by the zoning board. They had continued it to their December meeting because they wanted to find more information. So I believe the proposal staff is to wait to make the final presentations at the adoption hearing so that they have the benefit of the zoning board's discussions. But staff is here if you have any questions or concerns about this. This, it's not listed in the thing, but colloquial, this is the BG Mine site.
Counsel?
Move to second.
Move to second. Second.
There's been a motion to move to second reading and a second to the second reading. Is there a further discussion?
Or third.
Or third?
I don't know if there's any public comment.
And then members of the public, anybody that would like to speak on this item, please come forward at this time.
Amy had something.
Amy, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, when we move to the second reading, we'll have a more of a fuller discussion.
Yes.
Staff will have something to say about it.
Yes. And the applicant will have something to say.
Applicant will too.
Part of this was, we want to have the zoning board's input as well.
Right, that's what I would like to, thank you.
Great, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, there's been a motion and a second to move to a second reading. And once again, any members of the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, item B, Derek.
A zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, approving application PD-61859-BOS, amending the existing T-Sone mixed-use plan development, zoning ordinance ZO-303-16 to allow the schedule of uses and update the master concept plan for approximately 1.3 acres located on Old US 41 south of River Rock Boulevard, strap number 26-47-25-B4-00010.0010, providing for effective date. This is another one that is for public comment as well.
Absolutely. Okay, members of the public that would like to speak on this? Please come forward. Counsel? Amy?
I just have a question. Maybe I'm not reading the ordinance properly, but on the second page where they have all the different uses. And I listened to the zoning board meeting. I thought the only one that was supposed to be on this was supposed to be the auto retail store. Why are all these, why is all this listed on the second page? Am I reading that wrong?
You might be. I might have, I might have...
Because actually, they listed all the things not, and...
They were taking out some, and I...
They were taking out everything except, unless I didn't hear it properly. They were supposed to take everything out except the auto retail store.
Not everything.
Yes, like, everything, and they were committed to doing that. Anyway, could you clarify what came out of that, of the zoning?
The zoning hearing, the answer really did come down to basically, they're removing a bunch of uses that will not be from the original scheduled uses for parcel O and adding the auto parts store.
Correct.
That was the only changes.
Right, but this, this has all these uses in here, so is this wrong?
This came from, I pulled this from the staff report. What I believe you're missing is it's not showing the strikeouts. So these are, many of these uses are remaining, but there were certain uses that were struck out that I will make sure that I corrected.
Would you just clarify that because I thought it was clear when I looked at the video, and if I'm wrong, just with whatever they said in the hearing? And that I thought that what Mr. Worcester had said, that he was very comfortable with the idea that the only use that was going to remain on parcel O would be the retail store for autos.
Okay.
Which would give us protection in case of redevelopment. So was I wrong?
Yes. Do you remember that from the hearing?
You were there, I think.
Lindsey Robin, for the record, Maldrop Engineer, and actually wasn't prepared for a presentation tonight, but that is actually incorrect. We are limiting the schedule of uses. We're not just allowing one use, though. We're limiting the uses.
It wasn't just auto retail.
We removed all the heavy uses that we agreed with staff.
Well, just for next time, could you just review that because I remember it differently, all right? And whatever they decide was fine, but that's not, I don't, I don't think that's...
Amy, do you want to pull this and wait?
No.
Okay.
Because we can have it at the second reading. I just thought that this was...
No, I understand, I just...
A Scrivener's error. If it's not a Scrivener's error, then Derek has to straighten it out. I thought it was a mistake on the green sheet.
Well, there's, there's another part to this, is that was the recommendation of the zoning board.
Okay.
That's not the...
That wasn't what was agreed to by the applicant?
Well, I think the applicant did agree to it at the meeting. In fact, it was the applicant's presentation to remove some of the uses. So, you know, that just needs to be reflected in the final, that needs to be reflected in the final draft of the ordinance.
So it's not reflected in here, is that correct?
I don't know the use.
So it's hard to advance it to a second reading when we're not sure of the first reading, but...
The use is listed in this draft ordinance. I've reviewed the draft ordinance against what we submitted.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The draft ordinance that you're looking at does match what we proposed. We've removed a ton of uses from the list that were currently permitted.
It doesn't show the strike throughs is what I'm suggesting, is it doesn't show what was removed from the prior. This is the list of uses. It doesn't show that what was struck out.
And that's because we're adding those uses, so we had to underline them because parcel O is new technically, so we, you underline when you're adding, and you strike through if you're removing something that existed today.
Well, I only have underlined. I have no strike through.
Yeah, that's correct. It would be all underlined.
Anyway, we could, I think it's fine to move to the second reading, but I'm going to follow up with this at the second, you know?
Absolutely.
This is going to be a discussion when we make our final decision there.
All right, and we'll make it very clear in the presentation what we've removed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, any questions, further questions? What's your pleasure?
Move to second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to move to a second reading and a second. Okay, there's been a motion to move to a second reading and a second. Anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
No.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, item ten, the first reading of the following ordinances and public comment is allowed here again.
Okay, ordinance of the city council of Bonita Springs, Florida adopting the twenty-nineteen five-year capital improvement program annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for exclusion from codification, and providing for an effective date.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Counsel, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, item eleven, moving right along here, Derek.
All right. An ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, oh, it's a long one, sorry. An ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, amending the city of Bonita Springs comprehensive plan as adopted by ordinance number zero-two six dash sixteen as amended, considering the remaining state mandated amendments on the evaluation appraisal report, so as to amend the future land use element, coastal conservation management element, and the capital improvements element, to revise and update the remaining existing goals, objectives, and policy in the data and analysis in accordance with the mandate set forth in chapter one sixty-three Florida statutes, providing for transmittal to the state land planning agency, providing for conflicts clause, and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Well, this is a final, this is a final adoption, so there is a staff presentation as well.
Good evening, counsel. For the record, Jack Warren gets known with community development. As you may recall, at your last council meeting, we continued this agenda item because we were still waiting for comments from the state land planning agency. We did receive a letter where the state had no comments, so we are here today to go ahead and provide a presentation on the adoption package as proposed. And I have Dr. Banning here for the presentation.
Thank you.
It's all the way over on the...
Yep.
And I'm used to being the bad guy, Dr. Banning, just so you know. So don't take it personal, but we just want to, for anybody, for anybody, so just want to keep, like I said, the law and then what we're looking to do.
So the presentation I have for you tonight is in two parts. The first part is the language that, for adoption. So the summary of agency comments, usually we provide those. Department of Economic Opportunity received the transmittal package. They determined it was complete, and they had no comments or no objections to the proposed amendments. South Florida Water Management District provided comment relative to the status of the water supply plan. And the Bonita Springs Utilities has updated that plan, which I'll talk about next. Florida Department of Environmental Protection said that there was no provision that would result in adverse impacts, and Lee County had no comments. So that's the summary of the agency comments. There are two changes to the package. So in the transmittal, there's two changes that we would like you to consider upon adoption. The first is an update, and this is in your addendum three. The first is an update to policy one point, I need my glasses on, one point eight point one, and that refers to the South Florida Regional Planning Council's statewide regional evacuation study for Southwest Florida. The second change is in your packet, and that was addendum one. That was in the capital improvements element, and that was the water supply plan. And that was in blue, strike through language. So those are the two changes since transmittal that we would like you to consider. And I can respond to what we believe some of the public comments are, if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure.
Okay. So I just want to back up and kind of reiterate the story about the coastal high hazard and the coastal management area map. So when we first started this process, prior to the lawsuit that was filed, we knew from the state that we needed to update the coastal high hazard area map, because your map was not consistent with what the state required. At that time, we had lots of public meetings, and the direction from counsel and from the public that was that you didn't want us to make any changes to the area. You wanted us to leave your existing protections in place. And so you did not want us to expand the area or make the area smaller. So that was the direction that we were provided, and that was the direction we proceeded on as we made the amendments. So a little history about coastal high hazard is, this is your, I'm gonna call it your old map, but in other words, it's also your existing map, because you have not yet adopted anything new. So just for the sake of clarity, I'm gonna call it your old map. This was your old coastal high hazard map. This is not consistent with state law. It was a blanket administrative area. The majority of it was covered, the coastal high hazard area policies, that was all in your coastal management element.
Dr. Banning, could you repeat that? So you're saying that that map that was adopted was not in compliance with state law?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So the state law here, we reiterated that, and you've seen this language before, is that the state required the coastal high hazard area in a very specific manner. So they said that it be designated as the area below the elevation of the category one storm surge line, as established by the SLOSH model. So they were very specific, meaning your previous map needed to be changed. Okay? So this map was prepared. This is your coastal high hazard area as proposed in the transmittal package. That is based on the category one storm surge, and it is based on what the state requires. Okay? We also presented to you, when we did transmittal, a couple different options. One was to create a combined map where you could look at sort of these two areas together. You chose this map, option one, we called it, which was, we renamed the map, and we called it a coastal management area. And you chose to keep your same boundaries consistent with the previous map. The one difference is that you added the little finger up above, because that was newly annexed land in the city. Okay? So I'm gonna compare for you the existing and the proposed maps. So on the left of the screen is the map as you have it. We'll call it your old coastal high hazard area and your new coastal management area. This was a way for us to protect your existing regulations. We had to change the name of the map, because the state no longer recognized this, your old map, as a coastal high hazard area. Okay? So I also want to address the policy language change. So on the top, I have existing policy language, and again, I'm calling it existing, because you've not yet adopted anything. You had two pieces that go together. One is objective five point one, previously that defined your coastal high hazard area as category one hurricane evacuation area as defined by the Southwest Florida Hurricane Evacuation Study. And then, policy five point one point four talked about limiting density, talked about infill only in this area, and that that shall not exceed the surrounding properties density and intensity, except as allowed by existing zoning at time of the comprehensive plan. Our proposed transmitted language changes, we changed the numbering, so it's now the new proposed as five point two point four. And that's how I'll refer to it from now on, is five point two point four. That says development in the coastal management area is otherwise restricted by numbering change, again, five point two point one, and the city's redevelopment project on Old Forty-One, et cetera. The remainder of the language stayed the same. So this new proposed transmitted language refers to your coastal management area map on the right.
Are you all right for a question?
Yeah, I thought we were changing the Old Forty-One to downtown, so to be consistent with all these different plans.
So thank you for that question. Because we've got these comprehensive plan amendments moving at the same time, what we are presenting now is what was transmitted to be adopted. And as we do the downtown amendments, we would propose making that name change. So, yeah.
So is the downtown not required to be the same density as the surrounding neighborhoods?
When we come back with the downtown language, we've added another policy to exempt it from your coastal management area. Right? But to keep things clean and to keep then things moving along in the process, we wanted to not address the downtown at adoption of the state required.
Fred, did you have a question? No? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So again, the new language refers to the area, the exact area, in your previous map. Okay? So I wanted to present for you, I know there's a lot of words on the screen, which I normally don't like to do, but we went back to Florida statutes to address some of your questions at the last meeting about what was actually required. Florida statute says that you have to have principles in your plan, and that has to guide future decisions in a consistent manner. Shall contain programs and activities to ensure comprehensive plans are implemented. It also says that the plan shall establish meaningful and predictable standards for the use and development of land and provide meaningful guidelines for the content of more detailed land development, land use regulations. Okay? I'll come back to that in a minute. It also says that if you are going to adopt something by reference, that has to identify the title and author of the document and indicate clearly what provisions and addition of the documents being adopted. It also says all mandatory and optional elements must be based on relevant and appropriate data and analysis, and that to be based on data means to react to it in an appropriate way and to the extent necessary indicated by the data available on that particular subject of the time of adoption of the plan or plan amendment at issue. Okay? So there's certain things that need to be clarified here. In your previous language, it talked about a hurricane evacuation study. That study no longer exists. So the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council no longer does a hurricane evacuation study. There's also no longer a category one hurricane evacuation area. That area, all hazards are now considered in a new map, and I'll turn to that in a minute, and those are designated by zone. Okay? There's another piece here that I, let me get through this.
And I'm sorry, I'd prefer a question, because I know it's a lot of material, but when you say a category one hurricane, that's...
It's small.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, very small, because Irma was a three, which was...
Four.
Well, yeah, it might, no.
No, just a three?
Just a three, anyway. But what I'm saying is, that's, so they've just done away with that, because they look at it basically as a strong windstorm, right?
Or...
Well, the, the, the wind effect is not necessarily correlated to the...
The category, okay. But bottom line, the lowest level, they're just eliminating.
So, so let me go back, and this is the reason why I'm talking about this, is because in your existing policy language, it refers to a category one hurricane evacuation area as defined by the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council Hurricane Evacuation Study. Neither of those two exist. Okay? So...
Thank you.
Okay. So that, I need to continue on, tell you the rest of the story here. There's no category one hurricane evacuation area. The methodology behind the new area, the statewide regional evacuation study, is not created by the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. Hazards are made through a statewide regional evacuation study for the Southwest Florida region. It's a completely different area. It's not the same as the old hurricane evacuation area. There's new areas they define, and there's new methodology behind that new study. And that's from 2010. So for the past nine years, they've had new methodology and new maps.
And isn't it also a function of what level of storm that we're anticipating to hit us?
I'll get to that in a, yes, because that's a good question. I have the map following this. If the city had not made changes to your now policy five point two point four, referring to this new CMA area, you would have been improperly referencing an area of, in a study that no longer exists. Okay? If you do that, what you'll lose is anything, any meaningful and enforceable standard. So you will no longer have any policy tool to limit density and infill in that area. Okay? So the change was probably, properly processed under state required amendments. If I go back to reference, the state requires that you reference areas that exist. It requires that you reference meaningful data. It requires that you reference maps and areas that are in existence, because you have to have meaningful standards for, in your comprehensive plan. One other thing is that these changes memorialized your prior protections that the city had under your old outdated CHHA area. So it was a way to respond to the state, as well as to provide the protections for the city. There's no protections that have expanded, no protections that have been removed. This is the new map, just for a little bit of background. This is the new map that is created. How this map is created here is that in 2010, actually, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, after we had several hurricanes in the state, the state went back and said, we don't have a map anymore that's gonna serve us well. So they got together about eleven regional planning councils. They all put their heads together in the state, and they created a new methodology to look at hazards. This is an all hazards map. It is not a hurricane map. So it deals with terrorism threats. It deals with flooding. It deals with fires. So this map was created to respond to all hazards that may occur. Okay? And by doing that, what they did is they said, we're gonna do it by zone, because we don't know where a hazard's gonna occur. It may be a wildfire that we have to evacuate Zone B. So, and in terms of this evacuation study, they included a lot of new methodology in terms of driver behavior. They included the highway network. They included evacuation traffic. They did dynamic traffic assessment models, prototype model development. So there's a lot of new data, a lot of new methodology that goes into the creation of this map. So the methodology's created statewide, and then the regional planning councils get it, and they adjust it for their local area. Right? So there's no relevance here anymore to a hurricane evacuation area. Could it be used for hurricane evacuation? Absolutely. And I assume that it is. But if you'll notice, and if you look in the city of Bonita Springs area, Zone A now covers a dramatically much larger area than your existing coastal high hazard area. So I think that the, part of the issue here is wanting to continue to have a hurricane storm, or a hurricane evacuation area. That would require a lot more data and analysis. That would require a lot more thinking about how that would work for the city. So again, the policy language that has been proposed refers to this area, which is your historical area, and this is the area that the city has made its decisions based on its limitations on intensity and density historically. So are there any questions about that?
Counsel?
I want to thank you for your presentation, because I, it was very thorough, and I finally get the picture here. So I appreciate the attention that you gave to explain this to us, and I think you followed our instructions. And I guess, for me, I'm convinced that the left-hand map and the right-hand map are basically the same, except for that finger that was the annexed property. So we are maintaining our protections, which is what the council had directed you to do. So I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anything else?
And had we gone to the new map, it would have actually exempted areas in the existing one.
That's a, that's a very good point that we had talked about at transmittal, is if you compare this map to the new... you compare this map to the new CMA, I'm gonna call it the new CMA, then areas that you previously had, had limited density and intensity would now no longer have those limits.
And for the record, I'm actually for doing that, because this is actually based on science, so I'd rather do that. But as a council, we decided to go with the other one, so...
Yeah. You now have both. So, just to clarify, in your, in your transmittal package, you have both. This refers to evacuation times, which is required by the state. So, it responded, the new policies associated with this map responded to the state's requirements about what this map is for.
Yeah, I just meant, we're, we're limiting development, saying it's a coastal high hazard, well, it's no longer that, but the CMA, even though, you know, under, science is saying, no, that it's not at that lower level, so it shouldn't really be in there. So, theoretically, you know, it should be able to handle more on that property, but, but we're still limiting it.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions? Okay, members of the public, Derek, that would like to speak?
I don't have anything, so...
Yeah, no, no. I just didn't know if you had anything, I guess, at this point.
No, this is...
Cover, but members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. On this item, I'm sorry, on this item, Alex. I'm looking forward to hearing from you, I app...
Yes.
Very much so. Hello, Don, welcome.
May I have more than three minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just start with the map that she had up. Can we go back to that map before? The red one? No, this one.
Who has the clicker?
The all hazards map, right there.
Thanks. Okay. She said this was, this was for all emergencies. If you go down the fourth dot, this replaced the previous hurricane evacuation studies that were in our comp plan for, it was to replace the hurricane evacuation studies that we utilized on 511. Just, I caught that. I'll start with this. The downtown redevelopment area was already exempted from the coastal high hazard limitations. The densities and intensities were already exempted. There was no need to change coastal high hazard area to the CMA area in order to allow redevelopment in, on Old 41. As written, staff is proposing changing policy that is not mandated by the state of Florida, and I have proof of that with their own work. The changes proposed were not requested by the taxpayer, and in fact, you have been shown time and again how such optional amendments would weaken our comprehensive plan that protects our lives and property. These proposed optional changes are not required by the state mandate. The process all began with the former mayor and council members. I know it's not your fault. The EAR process was given to FGCU. These are the same optional amendments that were originally presented to the old council when this process first began. The problem is that the reasons for the amendments and the status as to optional or mandated has been changed by staff or FGCU along the way, as the taxpayers have put more and more facts on the record over the past four years. The state mandates, as found in Florida statutes, do not require the deletion of the term coastal high hazard area. The state statutes also do not require the coastal high hazard area to be replaced by a fictitious area named coastal management area. At the September meeting, when there was a decision on what map you were gonna use, that September meeting was advertised as only mandated amendments being proposed. So, that wasn't mandated to vote on that map and not use the new coastal high hazard map. The state mandate, as found in statutes, does mandate a new definition for the coastal high hazard area. Statutes requires that local governments limit public expenditures that subsidize development in coastal high hazard areas. Statutes require that local governments designate coastal high hazard areas on their future land use map series. The State Department of Economic Opportunity, in charge of comprehensive plan, states on their website that many local comprehensive plans of coastal communities and municipalities have objectives and policies which limit or restrict residential density, the type of development allowed, establish special building requirements, and that limit the use of public funds within the coastal high hazard area. Therefore, the fact that the city of Benita has additional restrictions within the coastal high hazard area is very common and not out of the ordinary. The state does not mandate that we make optional amendments to existing goals, objectives, and policies that would require us to replace the term coastal high hazard area with coastal management area. The state requires us to have a coastal management element in our comprehensive plan. The state does not require us to replace our policies containing the term coastal high hazard area with the term coastal management area. And most importantly, the coastal management element must contain a component that outlines policies or hazard mitigation and protection of human life against the effects of natural, natural disasters, including population evacuation. Therefore, the existing description of category one evacuation area should have been replaced with the appropriate new study and author indicated. And the new terminology of evacuation zones, as would be a state mandate, so why is the reference to evacuation being deleted entirely and coastal hazard area being replaced with coastal management area, which is not state mandated? We are about 11 years late on following state mandates as to the implementing of the new definition for the coastal high hazard area and the new map depicting the land it represents. Under 163-3178 Coastal Management, this subsection shall become effective immediately and shall apply to all governments no later than July 1, 2008. Local governments shall amend their future land use map and coastal management element to include the new definition of coastal high hazard area and to depict the coastal high hazard area in the future land use map. I'm almost finished, I'm sorry. Staff could have saved time and money by merely adopting the new definition and map of the coastal high hazard area as mandated by the state in 2008, and then leaving the existent, existing policy wording of coastal high hazard area intact. Instead, staff proposed making optional changes to the citizens' comp plan, which are not mandated by the state, and resulting in an unnecessary change of policy, not advertised for this public hearing and not wanted by the taxpayers of the city. The city council's been asked time and again by the taxpayers of the city to preserve and protect the goals, objectives, and policies within the comprehensive plan that prevent any increase in residential density, commercial intensity, or any increase in height limits within the coastal high hazard area, with the exception of Old 41. The taxpayers have been promised time and again that the city will prevent such increases. Why then are optional amendments presented by staff that would result in allowing such increases? Optional amendments presented by staff as though they are Florida state mandates? This mayor and council can clearly see they are not Florida state mandated amendments, as was advertised in the newspaper and in the September agenda. I would like to offer further evidence that the proposed changes are not mandated within the coastal high hazard area, other than the new definition and new map said area and the areas where they were supposed to put in, insert the new evacuation areas into them, to replace the old. I have a copy for each of you, a partial list created by FGCU in 2016 of optional and state-required amendments. I didn't get to highlight all the goals, objectives, and policies of concern affecting the coastal high hazard area, but I highlighted enough that you will surely get the idea that the majority of the proposed amendments affecting the existing high hazard area are not mandated by the state and definitely cannot be adopted today. The state wasn't against any changes for the proposed amendments, but the proposed amendments were not mandated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Don, and you'll go through this.
If you open to the first page, you'll see the 18, and it says, "No change required." And I put a yellow line down through the state required, because they'll have an X there if you need it. The next page, 181, 182, 183, 7, shown as not state required. Okay? Although, number 7, it says optional coastal high hazard, that definitely should have been required as far as the definition and...
I was gonna say, it's a lot of, go ahead, Laura, if you'd like to...
This is just a lot of information, and it's...
Okay, just, how about going to page...
Sam was on.
Yeah, how about going to page 3?
Yeah, let's let her get through her presentation.
Yeah, please, thank you. Page 3 are the objectives, 51, 511, 512, that she just went through up here and explained to you why they had to be state mandated. As you can see, in 2016, when they did the original list, they aren't state mandated. All I did was highlight the ones that they have mentioned in the coastal high hazard area that are state mandated changes. They are not state mandated changes. This is their information from FGCU. They aren't required by the state.
Well, I'm confused, because I thought...
Thank you, thank you, Don.
Statutes...
You're welcome.
No, thank you very much, and then, Laura, please?
Well, so, could...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Dr. Banion?
What would you like me to respond to?
Well, the whole, you know, are you make, are you making these things up, basically? I mean, are you following the law, or are you just...
So, again, I, we, we went through the areas, can we make that a presentation?
But can you respond specifically to what Ms. Donkowski was saying?
Don Kinokowski.
Don Kinokowski.
What I will tell you is, is that the law requires us to refer to an area that exists. Okay? And, so, that's very important, I think, when we're talking about what's struck through. We can't leave language in there that refers to an area that doesn't exist. Okay? So, that's, that's one thing. The other issue is that you did have, when we first transmitted the amendments, as Councilman Gibson talked about, it, it was possible, right, for you to simply replace your, sorry. If you go to the yes, you could have replaced your coastal high hazard area with this area. That was not the direction that we had been given by citizens early on, nor council, because what you had told us was, keep the same protections that you previously had. And again, if you notice in this map, it's missing pockets of the coastal management area. Your coastal management area is broader than the coastal...
Derek, I'm sorry.
You know, I, I think I sort of just had an epiphany on hearing Ms. Kinokowski's presentation, so I wanna see if I can put into words what I, what I think she, her position is, and she can confirm it or not, but...
Second word of the day, epiphany.
Yeah, so, her, I could throw a few more out there.
There's plenty.
I'll try to ameliorate the dichotomy here between the two sides, but the, the understanding, I think what, what she is highlighting is that if you just read the policy, the text amendment changes, you might, you would get the impression that coastal high hazard area is being weakened, and, and the way it's being weakened is through striking out policies that previously said coastal high hazard area, and then replacing it with coastal management area. Now, she is correct in saying there's nothing in the coastal ma, uh, management element of the, the Growth Management Act or anywhere else that says you have to adopt a, a policy. What, what I think staff has done, and what Dr. Banion has done is, and I believe, I wasn't here in 2016 when this started, but based on direction from the community and from the council, was, we know we have to make changes, but we don't want to open the flood gates. We wanna keep the status quo. And so, what has happened is, wherever, the things that were taken out were required to be taken out. The map was changed to reflect the slosh map, the category one zone, and coastal management replaced coastal high hazard in all those locations, but it's the map. The coastal management app, map overlays all the coastal high hazard areas. So, what, what it is, is basically, these changes amount to a stopgap to keep the existing plan provisions in place with the minimum number of changes to the, the, the plan. I, I believe that if these plan provisions had been laid out separately and the coastal high hazard element had stayed exactly the same, just set a new goal, and here's a coastal management act, and we duplicated all the same language, it would be clearer, but it may not be clear with just the text amendments. Does that, does that make sense to you? Because I think that's what I'm understanding the issue is, and I just wanna see if I can help clarify this.
Oh, I appreciate that. Amy?
The way I understand, I, I think I'm following what Don has suggested, I think parallel's what you said. And it actually, Mike said, "We could have just said, changed it to the, whatever the state said the coastal high hazard was." And we were told that that was one of our choices. But, at the same time, citizens and residents said, "Don't take away the, the protections that existed in our current map." And that's why we got, we said, "We wanted to extend the same protections that were there in the past." So, why, we didn't feel that the state redoing of that map suited our purposes. So, technically, we could just say, "Let's do that map." But what are we gonna do with the rest of the stuff that we're, we're taking the protection away from? That was the council's policy decision. So, I do not agree that we're not, you know, I, maybe Don is technically correct, but we could not accomplish what the, what the council has directed staff and Dr. Banion to do by doing that. Who, who wants to have fewer protections? I don't. Does anybody else here want to have fewer protections to those areas that were included in the old hurricane one, whatever we called it? That's the point. That's what we have to decide.
Can I also make a point of clarification here, and maybe Derek can respond to this as well, which is, when you're making comprehensive plan changes that are required by the state from the EAR, the state doesn't limit you to those, because I think the state realizes that if you're making changes to respond to the, to the state, you don't have to gut your plan as a result. Right? So, so, when we talk about state-required amendments as part of the EAR process, it is a process that the state recognizes. So, I, I don't think there's a, a technical kind of standard that the state sets that says, when you're making changes based on your EAR that are required by the state, they're not saying those are the only changes you are to make, recognizing, of course, that the comprehensive plan is a document as a whole that works together, but...
Correct. The, the EAR, the statute that deals with, the evaluation appraisal report is very broad in its language with respect to what you're supposed to do every seven years, and then it says that you are, in, after the evaluation, you are to look comprehensively, comprehensively, and make those changes that are based on local conditions. The other possible concern is, and I don't know that we evaluated this, because the direction wasn't to, to bring it to a narrow spot, is that if you just make changes that meet the minimum statute, the direction based on the statute, you may create holes and inconsistencies, which is also against state law. You're not allowed to, so, so, that's why I, I would like to really phrase this, other than the, the prior discussion about excluding the downtown, the old downtown, is it's a status quo change. Maybe that isn't clear, and that, and, so, that's why I'm trying to look into Ms. Kinokowski to see if she understands, because I wanna make sure that everyone is operating with the same information.
Sure. Don, would you like to say a few words, please? Thank you, Margaret.
My concern is that the reason you did it...
My concern is that the reason you did it separately is because there were so many optional amendments put in there, like they, they, one of the optional amendments was to, uh, do away with densities on islands. There were, there were so many optional amendments that the council separated them and said, "We'll just do the state required amendments, and we'll do the other ones in the spring." So, when that September meeting came and they advertised it as just state mandated ones, I knew what the state mandated ones, so I didn't come, and I didn't respond, and then a different map is done and these changes are made. That's my problem. That's my problem.
That's a different, that...
Do you see what I mean? And so, then, that's...
I don't want to have a dialogue, but I think you're focusing on the wrong thing here, personally. I mean, it's not the issue of mandated versus, versus optional. We are required to change the name of coastal high hazard, and if we were just following the state... Let me finish and try to listen to what I'm saying. We are required to, to adopt the map for the SLOSH, all right?
Right, right.
And that is different from the current map that we're using, all right? It is different. We decided, and once that's done, we, we saw an unintended consequence, which was eliminating some of the protections that the former, certain areas of the city had had the protection under our existing map. This is where we are. It has nothing to do, really, with optional versus mandated. If you, if we follow you and, and, and just adopt the map, which is we're required to do, because that's the only one that exists now, the other one is fictitional, then we're gonna eliminate some of the protections. And I don't think that's what you want to do.
No, it's not.
Is that what you want to do?
No, I just...
Well, then, that's what, that's what you're asking us to do. And I, and, and Mike said, "Let's go to the, to the new state map," because he feels we should eliminate some of the protection. I do not agree with that. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that. So, I'm com, we, we tried to make our, have this new area, which we call CMA, so that we have exactly the same protections that were there in the current, that were going to be eliminated if we adopted this SLOSH map, which you see in yellow here. So, I think that's what we should focus. It has not, it's not all-in-overs and mandate.
Okay.
What you need to focus on is, do you want the protection or don't you?
I do, and if we...
This is the way that it can be done. If there's a way that we could do it in a different way, we would, but we can't.
But this map was not utilized instead of, on 5-1-1, I think, on 5-1-1, just, no...
Let's, we're not, we're not interrupt each other.
Okay.
Thank you, Dawn. Please, yes.
Okay. In, in, I'm just saying, for one of the policies, one of the policies, this got eliminated. This was supposed to take the place of, I don't have it with me right now, 5-1-1, I believe. Where, what was the one that's...
I don't believe...
5.1.3.
5.1.3, which was the evacuation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so, rather than delete all that and not have that information in there, this was supposed to take that place, is what I'm saying. Not, has nothing to do with the old 41.
Now, what are you gonna do with that map? What are we, what policy is...
That should have been put into 5.1.3, correct?
Is that the evacuation?
No, I, I think...
No, 5.1.3 is gone. 5.1 is gone, it's replaced with 5.2. It doesn't exist. It's based on erroneous, it's no longer possible to base it on.
5.1.4.
Okay.
I think, I think we should...
And so, this was supposed to take the place of that.
If we want to have a...
Development in...
This is wrong.
Okay.
No.
I would show it to...
No, I've...
Okay.
It's 5.4.
Amy, did you have a comment?
No, I think we should just adopt it. We should decide whether we want the protections.
Or do you want to make a motion?
Right there.
When she's not speaking, I understand.
Overall.
I make a motion that we, um, adopt as presented by Dr. Banyan, this element.
There's been a motion to approve, is there a second?
Those rules apply across everything.
There's been a motion to approve, is there a second?
Have we received another resignation?
Yeah, we have another resignation here.
There's not a second at this time, Dawn. I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to...
Okay.
But, Dawn, do you, or any other members of the public? Dr. Banyan? And any other members of the public?
So, I, I really, I, we have to go back to this map again, and, and to reiterate that this map is not a hurricane evacuation map. And yes, it has implications for hurricane evacuation, but it is not the same map. And so...
It's all hazards. So, if it was a hurricane, they would say, "You need to evacuate A, maybe B." But if it's a fire, they're gonna say, "You need to do E and D."
Right. So, so in order to, if council preferred at some point in the future to recognize the existence of that map, that would be fine. That would also be an optional change because it requires significant more investigation as to whether this is the appropriate map to adopt, one. And a question about what problem are you trying to solve with this map? Because if you're trying to solve an all-hazards issue, then it doesn't belong in your coastal high hazard language in terms of density and intensity, right? So, there's another issue here, too, is that if you look with this, where the city is, it dramatically expands the, your current CMA area, ver, in a very significant way. And that has implications all throughout your comprehensive plan. So, in your future land use element, you have policies related to wanting increased density towards I-75. You've got a lot of other policies that would really have to be carefully looked at. So, in terms of preserving sort of this idea of, is it being as close to what the state requires and doing what's needed to continue the status quo, as Derek said, then this map is not necessarily, maybe in the future, but not necessarily something that you can just replace. It's not the same map.
So, we, we do have this map or we don't have this map?
This map is in, this is Lee County's emergency management map.
Okay, but, so, we're not putting it in? And we're not...
We are not suggesting that, we're not recommending that you put it in.
Because we don't say what we want to do with it. What's the point of putting it in if we don't have a policy that's associated with that? Is that...
In addition, there hasn't been the data analysis to back up the use of this map. So, I could not tell you whether it's appropriate for any policy at this point, because, again, the question is, what problem are you trying to solve? And the problem that you told us and community members, including Dawn, so the last meeting we had was April 4th, 2019, and that covered a lot of these issues. Dawn was at that meeting, so we've continued to have this conversation. This is not new. What is new is the coastal high hazard map. That was something that the, it's a new modeling, just, that was, been recently available. So, that's, this is data that's very fresh and very new. So, we would have had this map earlier, but the data was not available.
Thank you, Dr. Banyan. Any questions for Dr. Banyan? Other members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time?
On this item?
On this item. I apologize, Alex. On this item. I'm sorry, Alex.
My name is Marty Roach. As everybody can see here, there's obviously a difference of opinion, and it seems to me that there should be a way that these people could get together and do this, or at least discuss this at a time where it wouldn't present everybody on council and everybody here to hear the same things. I don't know why they can't do that. Can staff do that? And if Dawn has an interest in sitting down and doing this? Now that she's obviously elected to the zoning board, maybe that'll help get this started or whatever, but she's very prepared. She does all of her homework. At least they could sit down and review it and say, "Yes, no," but have a discussion back and forth, rather than come up here and everybody do it that way. I think she puts a lot of time and effort into what she does. I think she's very factual. I don't think she has all the information that it's available to everybody else here. She's just going by what the law says. And maybe there's a way they can work together in order to resolve this issue, because it certainly would cause a lot less strain on a lot of people. I don't know if there is or not, but if somebody could figure out a way, it would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I just have a question. Is this considered a mandatory amendment? Will this hold us up in our progress here? So, we need to make progress. I, I would like to ask the council to make a decision here, because I do think we have the information. We've had a lot of input on this from the, from the people, and I think, my opinion is we should move forward with this.
My second.
I'm satisfied with, with Dr. Banyan's presentation and our, our understanding of what the council direction was since April. I mean, I don't know why we're changing it now.
So, you're ma, you're making a motion, Amy?
Yes.
To approve?
Approve.
And Laura, you're seconding?
Second, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion from the council? Fred?
Yeah. Is it possible, because we have two somewhat different points of view, when this would eventually go up to the state for their review? Can't this go with it? And they'll comment on, on both of them, I think.
This is already gone.
Yeah.
Okay.
No. All comments received at the date of transmittal go to the state as part of the package. But the state's reviewed this and hasn't, hasn't commented.
And, and I just want to reiterate and remind everybody that the first state-required package that went up in 2017, the state came back and said, "You must have a coastal high hazard area map." That was the state's comments. They didn't object, but that was their tech, technical comment, is that they were looking for the orange map. So...
Fred, you have another question? No? Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there any further discussion or any other members of the public that would like to speak? Yes?
The attorney explained it. Well, I, I wish I had known in September and would have come to that meeting, but he did explain it, and it does make more sense. It's just that these aren't all mandated, you know, requirements, you know, the changes, but it was just to handle the map, and it, it didn't appear that way in the, in the changes, because as you could see, all those things said that there was nothing mandated on it. But he explained the reason why, and if, if I had known that, I'd have been here for that meeting and would have understood that, too. But, thank you.
Thank you very much. There's been a motion to approve in a second. Mike, any further comment?
No.
Okay.
Unless we want to switch to the...
Our council is small enough.
There's, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Or you come up here?
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr? Aye. Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next item.
Next item.
An ordinance of the city of Benita Springs amending the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapters 3 Development Standards and 4 Zoning relating to development and construction, surface water management and drainage, amending Section 3-1-3, 136. Additional submittal requirements, amending Section 3-193. Final inspection and certificate of compliance, amending Section 4-2224. Clearing, grading, or filling of land, providing for complex wall severability, codification, and scribblers errors and modifications that may arise at the consideration of a public meeting, hearing, and effective date. I think I got it all. This was the, this is the stormwater ordinance carried over from your last meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The mayor and council. This is the second reading of something that we have brought to you before. I'm here to, with Tricia Goff, of both engineers in the Community Development Department. I'm going to address Chapter 3 and answer any questions that you might have. Up to this point, you haven't had too much discussion or questions concerning this, so I'm just here tonight to answer anything you might have during the second reading. ICPR modeling is changed to Chapter 3-136, which is submittal requirements for development orders, and that will require developers to address no adverse impact to storm drainage on adjacent properties through inserting into the city new updated ICPR model. As-built requirements, Chapter 3-193, in summary, is as-built requirements at compliance to construction. When construction's over, we'll have a set of finished as-built drawings that shows exactly what was built. That, we'll have it in digital copy, and we'll also have it in hard copy. That is the two Chapter 3 land development items, and Tricia is going to address Chapter 4 zoning item of single-family drink.
Great.
While, while Tricia's coming up here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just for clarification, on the, on the last page of the exhibit, there is one subsection, it's subsection, it's Section 4-224, D-sub-3-5, Roman numeral 5, talking about modifications that alter flow or drainage patterns will be a, a public nuisance and code enforcement can deal with it. Because that's listed under the final site detail plans, we don't want anyone to think that that is only if you modify it after final site detail plan. So, we're, I'm recommending you renumber it to 4-2224-sub-E, which will make it a general, general violation of our code to modify without permits water flow that affects, adversely affects neighbors.
Okay.
And Tricia can make some comments on Chapter 4? Okay, and then we're prepared to answer any questions.
Okay. Tricia, then, council?
Good evening, mayor and council. So, we met two weeks ago, November 20th, and it was discussed the modifications. Staff has went back to the drawing board and have made those modifications. I just wanted to go over a couple of them with you. So, in LDC, Section 4-224 subsection D, a drainage plan now will be, can be done by, by a professional engineer, an architect, or a land surveyor. We believe that with the Florida statutes, they will be able to figure out with their code abilities to, on what they can and can't do. The next section of the code was not changed. However, we do feel that if 30 inches or more of the lot has added fill, then a professional engineer has to do the calculations. So, that is the one thing we did not change, but I did want to point out. The last change is at time of CO, prior to CO, an as-built plan will be provided by that professional, and we will review that plan and make sure that it matches the approved drainage plan that was originally submitted during building permit. And I did have some other pictures I know that we talked about, lots that were in bigger size, and I just still want to see the transition, obviously, the home on the left and going to the right. It's probably about 20 feet or more separation, but still be able to do that transition, you do need to have those drainage solutions in place. Somerset Lane, just another example. And then I also wanted to include those bigger lots in San Carlos Estates Water Control District. So, this is a lot that's under construction and has an approved drainage plan. It is not, this is not the finished product, but the neighbor to the right is having some issues, obviously, with sheet flow drainage, and so we are working with them. But I just wanted, again, just to go over, come up some of these. This is a good example in San Carlos Estates as well, still under construction, but we have sensitive lands to the left, and we just want to ensure that those are going to be protected, and the water will not, again, just sheet flow onto their property. Having the drainage plan will help. Another one in San Carlos Estates.
Fred, you have a question right now? We were gonna hold questions till the end, but...
Yeah, the end.
Okay.
San Carlos Estates Water Control District, again, both newer homes, but obviously, with San Carlos Estates Water Control District, you have your drain fields, and you do need to show the swale and berm locations. If they're not shown or built per the plan, you could still have some kind of flooding issues to your neighbor. I just wanted to show you a couple of slides. This is where staff had to go out several times. This had an approved drainage plan about a year and a half ago or so, and staff had to work with the contractor to try to figure out drainage solutions within the field. Obviously, with having the drainage plan, there was information, it just was not enough information. What we're trying to accomplish with this code change is that we will require additional inf... information with those drainage solutions and have the right professional do the plan so they know exactly.
Tricia, could you clarify for council?
Yes.
Approximately how many times you've visited the site?
Six times.
Six times. And how many phone calls you receive from the adjacent property or the continuing communication?
Numerous, yeah. I mean, this is just an example. I just wanted to go over so you could see a lot of under construction, and then some of the solutions that were created during construction, and then the finished product. This was a stem wall construction. Stem walls were provided, retaining walls, riprap, gutters, downspouts, yard drains. So all of the items that were mentioned in our code changes. So as of right now, our LDC does require a drainage plan if you are 18 inches above the crown of the road. However, we do not have something that indicates exactly what that drainage plan needs to indicate. So we are trying to be as detailed as possible to guide whoever needs to submit it, whatever professional, whether it's an engineer, architect, land architect, landscape architect, or a surveyor. So this is the main goal. And then if there is any questions.
Fred? Thank you very much, Fred.
At the discussion we had at the last meeting, and I'm prepared to vote for this, but I think we need to get, maybe it may be a change here and there, and then I'm going to bring up something that's even, it's more important in a way than what we got in there. Number one, Jay was saying we should have topo data points out on the surrounding property. How far out are we requiring that? What's, how's that handled, Jay?
I know he was looking up Florida statutes on how far off the property.
It should be five feet. Simply five feet, because in a lot of these infills, the side setback is five feet. So you're going to be at the house, it should be within the property line of five feet. And that fits within the criteria. Surveyors, by state statute, have a right of trespass to fulfill the needs of doing a survey. And it has to be minimal, and the criteria, and I looked that up. And as long as we stay within that five feet, there'd be no problem with being able to obtain the data.
Now, the next part of my statement would be, let's suppose we have one of these people design an infill lot. They put their seal on it, and the neighbor gets flooded, and that neighbor is so mad that he sues, which can't happen. Now, we have a requirement that contractors that have any kind of work with the city must have liability insurance, all kinds of insurance. There is no requirement about professionals. And as a general topic, we need to adopt something because a bunch of professionals are not insured. And the other thing is, even if they are insured, if they're working outside of what the state board or the law says we think they should work on, they're probably not covered any, but that needs to be addressed. And on this, once we figure it out, we should require, once that design comes in, proof that they are insured. Because if they're not, and that neighbor floods, I know Matt will tell you, he spent money on several projects straightening out what should have been fixed originally. So for going to all this trouble, I'm just pointing out that there's a kind of a gap. An architect, engineer, we're all subject to, if you do work, you're subject to liability if you make a mistake. But if you don't have insurance, and some of us have shallow pockets, so just bringing up a topic. It's not a popular one, but it's.
I'll bring two comments on that real brief. Number one, I don't know for architects and engineers, but for surveyors, they're required to carry insurance, or they have to put a statement in quarter-inch-high letters on their product that this is not covered by insurance. And so that it's clear that you've purchased something without insurance.
I think we better check and see what the other.
So we can, we can.
Well, I just think, I don't propose to hold this up tonight.
Right.
But I think we ought to find out, and if it's like positive it is, then we need to get something fixed quickly.
But to your point specifically, the as-built is really the key. Because the as-built certification is that that's the way the finished product was. The plan itself is a guide until it's as-built and proven that it was built that way. So during construction, you have all the different things that can happen.
So my hypothetical, Jay, is the guy designs it. We approve it. It's built. The survey as-built shows it was built to the design.
Yep.
And it floods.
Then someone's got a problem.
That's, but if they don't have insurance, that homeowner's got a problem. I mean, that's the point.
Well, we can, we can check with the city attorney to see where our, I know there are certain steps that we can't get in and out of as far as licensing of professionals, but we'll look at it.
And I think we ought to make sure that when we give big contracts out to architects and engineers, they should be insured, and we ought to get proof.
I agree.
Yeah. So all I'm doing, asking you to check into it.
Okay.
Okay.
Amy? Thank you, Fred. Amy?
What I'm saying is that, you know, this is an additional regulation that I'm not sure that we're the right entity to be placing. I don't even know if we can do this, something like this, because if there is a liability issue, that it's a private liability and not a city liability.
We can't really create a cause of action for.
Right. So I'm not, I mean, the regulatory authority is probably not a municipality, but I could be wrong. I think we've, we could always do that in the future. And if we do it for this, why don't we do it for everything? You know, any kind of professional that would help, excuse me, that would help a resident or, we are not, I don't think that's, we're not a daddy state or something. That's my opinion. So I have some policy issues with that suggestion, but I'd be willing to explore it and talk about it some more. I don't think it's obviously a direction that we should go in. But the other thing with five feet, I don't even know what you were talking about, but we should include that if we don't already have it. Some kind of survey, whatever, Jay, you said about, what, just put that into the thing. And I think I'm satisfied with the changes that have been made since the last time.
Fred?
I'm okay. I said I was going to vote for it.
No, I understand, but you had something to say while she was speaking.
No, no. All I'm saying is, I didn't limit my comment to just this. I said all these big contracts we're issuing, we need to make sure they're insured.
We do.
Architects and engineers?
City, we do. With city contracts, with city engineers.
I don't.
They have to carry insurance.
I don't think so.
Yes, you just said.
Just for the record, we did make an adjustment before, set it 50 by 50 grid, but a minimum of five feet on adjacent property, we've already got it included in the ordinance, so it's covered.
Do we say, in our wording, I forgot, do we say like licensed architect, engineer? So aren't there requirements on licensure? I mean, it should be a current licensure? So that, the state takes care of that, right?
The state takes care of that, and that's the reason I was going to refer to Derek, because I know in my own personal licenses that I have, there are certain things municipalities aren't allowed to do by the state, puts additional regulations on. And trust me, the hammer the state has in our licenses is huge. And nobody wants to lose their license because you lose their livelihood. So that's, I think they're there. I don't know architects. I do know, from talking with the engineers, I know surveyors, but I'm sure it's the same.
Fred, anything else? Mike?
No, I'm glad we added the architect and the surveyor. Can we also add anybody that stayed at a Holiday Inn Express?
Is that an amendment?
It's going to be the close of the year.
No, I'm good with it.
Laura?
Good.
Okay. Counsel, what's your preference?
Move for adoption.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Is there further discussion? And is public comment allowed here, Derek?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I'm sorry, I thought so.
On this.
Architects.
On this item. Alex, you're getting close, I promise. On this item, any members of the public like to speak? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
All right. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time on any item? Wild card, wide open. Dealer's choice.
Passenger train service.
How you doing, Councilman Grant? Nice to see you.
Alex Grant, 11851 East Terry Street. Last October 30th, I was at the Lee County delegation. I believe the mayor saw me there. And anyway, I gave my three-minute spiel, and.
It was a good spiel.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyway, I have brought with me all the reference materials that, in case, I think you all saw it, the paperwork. If anybody has any questions, I can spend a few hours with you in detail to describe any items that you might have a question with. But it's going to take a little time. And four or five minutes, it's not going to work. So just thought I'd mention that. Anybody that has any questions on this, see me. Next, the thing that I have learned since then, there is, Amtrak is planning 10 additional rail corridors. And guess what? One of the rail corridors they're planning is Tampa to the Fort Myers-Naples area. Okay. So that's one of the 10 future rail corridors. Now, the thing is, there is no train track between Sarasota city limits and Punta Gorda. The only way you could do this would be to run the rail through Lakeland down south to this area. In other words, to the Lee Collier County line, you could do it as, I think the train track exists as far as just around Wiggins Pass Road, but anyway, Collier County. Now, I wanted to just give you a, how we got to this point, a little history lesson. There was a public act in the Congress and Senate, 1970, October 30th, 1970, that set up the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak, okay, for short. Okay, now, at that time, and I have this in this book, there were the guidelines, at that time, the guideline was you had to have an endpoint metropolitan area, let's say Lee Collier County, that had to have a permanent population of 1 million residents. And that was the endpoint. Now, back in 1971, when Amtrak took over all the passenger rail service from the freight carriers, it was, in the state of Florida, there were two lines. It was, one line was from New York City to Miami, going with a spur going to Tampa, St. Petersburg. And the other one from Chicago to Tampa, Miami, with a spur to Miami, and main line going to Tampa, St. Petersburg. This is just to give you an idea. Now, they're planning to expand this situation. So the original rail line, CSX owns the right-of-way. CSX is the Chesapeake system merged with the Seaboard system, which was the Atlantic Coastline and Seaboard that was here originally. And then they merged with the, what was it, the Baltimore in Ohio and Chesapeake in Ohio. Anyway, so that's how CSX is. But all these railroads, the four railroads, and now CSX, in effect, made an agreement with this.
Councilman, there's going to be another opportunity here in just a few moments, if you'd like another opportunity to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. No, I know there's a lot of information to get through in a short time, and you've done through the years, a lot of work on it. So thank you very, very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. So I'm Andres Bas, I'm the chief experience officer at Adventure, and I just wanted to thank all the members of the council and the mayor for, once again, allowing me the opportunity to host Fiesta Benita Springs, which was approved earlier today. I also want to thank the members of my outreach committee that have contributed to executing Fiesta Benita Springs in the past, and I'm sure they will one more time, as well as some of the members of the staff from the city, in particular Laura and Arlene, who have helped us. I've had the pleasure of hosting Fiesta Benita Springs for the past three years through my former employer, the Media Vista Group. And I've enjoyed to see this event grow year to year and provide entertainment to a couple thousand Hispanics on a no-charge basis. And once again, I will work tirelessly to work, to procure, and to obtain enough sponsorships to properly promote and execute Fiesta Benita Springs. So I hope that everyone in this room has the opportunity to join us on April, Saturday, April 18th, for the fourth edition of Fiesta Benita Springs. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thanks for being here. Thank you for your nice comments.
Yes, ma'am.
Other members of the public that would like to speak? Hi, Kathy McGrath, how are you?
I'm fine, sir. Thank you for asking. Yes, Kathy McGrath. I'm sorry I didn't say something when Greg was here, but I've told him already, he was an excellent councilperson. He will be missed, but I'm very excited for his new position. He deserves it, he really does. And I just wanted to say a few words about last night. Most of, I saw a lot of familiar faces there, but I have to talk a little bit about Holiday in the Park because it was wonderful, I mean, from the very beginning. Gina Birch, she's like family. She's been our emcee forever. She did a great job. Just the whole atmosphere, the lighting. If anybody's watching this, if you haven't seen the park, and not only the park, but up and down 41, please, please go see it. I mean, the entertainment, we had, you know, the Village Band, there was something for everybody, the Village Band. We had our two nice dance studios, Dance City Productions and the Powerhouse Dance Studios. We had the Benita Springs Charter Elementary performing, the Benita Springs Middle School, the Cypress Lake well-known a cappella, and our own Benita Springs High School band. Remember, this is only the second year that this is in, and Mr. Bradley did a great job. And those kids, they're, all their instruments, I'm not kidding when I, I'm not exaggerating. The one tuba player, I swear, the tube was bigger than the person playing it. But it was just wonderful. And the only other thing I want to mention briefly is, when DJ TK, the disc jockey, was on, it was so popular last year that we decided, Michelle decided we needed a little dance contest. They had to be 12 years old and under, and I signed up 51 of them. And they got up there, and he played the music, and he and Gina would name the dance moves. And thank you to Dave and Sarah Zimmerman from Royal Scoop, who always step up, and they gave the prizes to them. And it was just, it was just a wonderful evening. So thank you all who were there coming. I know some couldn't make it, but it was just great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Other members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we are going to move on to the city attorney items.
I have one item for you. We waited till we had a slow meeting to bring this one out. It's a first reading of the following ordinance, an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending Section 4-130 of the Land Development Code to adjust the term limits on the zoning board chair, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, scribbling. board chair, providing for severability, conflicts, codification, scripturis error, and providing for an effective date. So as you recall, Derek Kurlander asked to have his term, which is coming to an end, extended because of trying to maintain that institutional knowledge going forward as they're about to tackle some of the final details and things they've been addressing for quite a long time.
And that was approved by the zoning board? That was their recommendation?
I don't re, it was discussed at the zoning board, but it was actually yourself, Mr. Mayor, who brought it forward to the city council.
No, I certainly understand that. I didn't know what the zoning board themselves had to say on the...
They're aware of it. I don't recall if they made an actual vote on the subject. I might look and see if John remembers.
And there was no...
It was just an informal discussion.
Yeah, there was no objections.
I think it was just premonition, really. I think that they knew that dawn was gonna get on, and they wanted to get...
They are, they are going to review of some of the issues with zoning, so I think it's important that they continue that process, because they're just starting that. Move to the second reading.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve to the second, or move to the second reading, excuse me, and a second. Counsel, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cumbia?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Thank you, Derek. Derek, anything else? You've had a lot, but...
Nothing else.
Dealer's choice. That's my word, I'm going with two words. Dealer's choice. Okay. Thank you very much.
Are we gonna have dinner at our next meeting? Maybe we should start earlier or something.
Make it the holiday meeting.
City ma, yeah.
We could start later, after dinner.
We could what?
We could start later, we could come after dinner.
City manager's item, also dealer's choice, so it's up to you guys.
Yes. Good evening, may I ask, Counsel? We did want to advise you that on December 18th, we've also talked to you all about having our budget retreat on capital projects. We are getting some very good news from our LMS grant applications. It looks like we're coming closer to a pending, the contract pending for the Spring Creek Benita Springs Golf Course Flood Improvement Project, as well as the Logan Boulevard Floodway Drainage Improvement Project. We are getting closer to additional information for the Pine Lake Preserve Project, and also which has moved up, which we are glad to see, is the larger land acquisition flood improvement projects and the DRGR drainage. We had not anticipated that would move up as far as it has, and we're getting traction on those. In light of that, we need to have some discussions on potential grant contracts and commitments we'd be making, and we want to look at that in the context of your overall budget and your capital improvements budget. As you recall, the Spring Creek Golf Course includes a purchase. We had allocated approximately $5 million in the grant application. We are still working with the property owners on negotiating costs, so there would be some gap in there in funding, so that's why we'd like to address these, so we can have some direction in moving forward these contracts. Because once we sign the contracts, those are federal programs that we have deliverables for, that we would need to, we would have obligations to. So what we're going to suggest, as I've talked to Derek, is that we not actually adjourn the city council meeting, we just set your budget agenda as part of the city council so that you can take formal action during the meeting. Also, we're going to try to keep the other items of the regular meeting to just those that pertinent in timeframe. We did want to prepare you, though, we do know the mayor's talking with Dr. Parsons on a time-sensitive issue about environmental resources and the green, blue-green algae, and so that will be a presentation we'll have at the next meeting. We also are hopeful that we are going to have a presentation by our consultants of the modeling that we have done for the golf course, as well as Logan Boulevard, and the removal of oxbows in the Imperial River. So that would be pertinent to have that information for you, so we can go over that for the budget questions that you may have. So it will most likely be a longer meeting, and we also do realize you've got zoning at 1 o'clock, we'll do our best to keep within those timeframes. Additionally, we wanted to formally announce that we are very pleased that we are one of 11 communities in the state of Florida to receive $5 million for the DEO buyout program. As a reminder, that's a federal program. Our targeted area is the Dean Quinns Imperial. And I did want to say that I was able to participate in our initial meeting with the representatives of both DEO, and we did have a federal representative at that meeting as well. And I would like to express my compliments to Matt and Ellie, especially Ellie. We were complimented on the way that we have also addressed future properties as well in a plan. We are very hopeful that a round two will be eligible, and we have been asked to provide our feedback to the state on the process in the drafting of the second round of the application. So it was met very favorably, and they were happy with the organization of our application, that it projected a phase two.
Great. Thank you. Any questions, Amy?
No, excellent work.
Yeah.
Great news, too.
And last but not least, I would like to thank all the staff for Holiday in the Park last night, and we do appreciate the outreach we received from the community regarding the lights in the downtown, and we'd also like to thank all the downtown business owners for participating as well, and in their lighting and contributing to the downtown.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Matt, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Wonderful. We are going to move on to mayor and council item reports. Amy?
I don't really have anything to report. I did attend Holiday in the Park, and I agree that it was really lovely. It's just so wonderful to see all the children. And even though we're an aging community, I can't, I don't know where all these children come from, but they had a good time, and I had a good time watching them. It was delightful. Thank you for the effort of the staff.
Absolutely. Thank you, Amy. Laura?
I echo that. It was joyous, it was almost magical, and I really, I just had such a great time, and it was so beautiful that we saw, you know, our deputies, our firefighters, our city, our citizens, our kids, all interacting, and, you know, you'd see a deputy kind of rock until, you know, a different song, and just sway in, and the kids coming up and talking, and the kids, and the kids. It's like that picture, but filled with lots of kids of different sizes and colors and families and strollers, and it dawned on me, that's the charm of Benita. It's the young, it's the youth, and like, where did all these kids come from? But you forget, I mean, my son left high school many, many, many moons ago, live in a gated community, no kids, and you go downtown, and there they are, and the pure joy, so like, and that's who, that's who sort of starts Christmas, our kids. Because for adults, it's lists and stuff to do. And they had just, it was just absolutely beautiful. Really, and even they, people parked nicely, I don't know, it would just echo, it was just really, it was like the last scene in Love Actually at the airport. It was magical.
I think it's been, I think it's been seven years since Nicholas left, but I could be wrong.
I had to park at Lyons, what do you mean?
Oh, I get there early.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
Yeah, I just want to echo, it was a great event last night, and thanks to everybody that helped put it on.
Fred?
Nothing.
Nothing?
And also, I'm gonna greatly miss Fred.
Oh, yeah, don't even go there.
Greg, over there.
Yes.
Right. No, thank you very much.
His chair's not even there. I mean, it's like, it's like he was never there.
Boy, Amy!
He's sitting in his chair. No. May I make a recommendation, that when we set up the next time, could we all be towards the center and change our names and all that? Not that we want to, because we're gonna miss everybody, but it would be nicer to be more closer to each other.
That means I have to sit next to Mike?
Yes, so we would poke each other and talk...
I did for a couple of years, actually.
Talk under our breath and all that, but I think it just would feel better, because otherwise, it really is sad, having these two empty spots here, that's all I gotta say.
Right. No, absolutely. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Wink News and the Naples Daily News for covering our second Water Town Hall meeting that we had down in Naples City Hall, actually a week and a half ago. We had, as you know, on our panel, we had FGCU, Dr. Parsons, who's with the water school, Matt Feeney obviously came down, we had State Representative Bob Rommel, we had Mayor Bill Barnett, we had Mayor Kevin Ruane, and Chairman Chauncey Goss, and they actually even let me up on the panel, which was honestly very, very enjoyable, and it was a wonderful event. We don't, we're gonna figure, we're gonna let the holidays come and go, but then we're gonna have our third Town Hall Water Meeting, and it's very likely gonna be on the east coast. There are eight water districts, as you've heard me say, around the state, and the goal is to cover all eight within the state. Obviously, Arlene touched on the 5 million. As you know, several months ago, we went down there and knocked on doors and spoke with people. I think a lot of the information gets out, but I think when something's new, it does take a little bit of time for everybody to understand. And absolutely love and respect the difference of opinion for people that want to hold on to their homes. I, believe me, that's the American dream for people, is to have their home. And for those that choose to relocate, that did file their application, I certainly respect their opinion, because that's why we're fighting so hard. You deserve to have a dry home. So great work, team, on that, and I certainly look forward to the next round, round two. I want to mention that for the past couple of days, I don't know if you've traveled on Imperial Parkway, but I've heard enough stories and seen too many accidents and heard too many incidents where I called Sheriff Carmine Marcino, and I also called Commissioner Ray Sandelli, and there is gonna be another report and some more statistics out there on Imperial Parkway. We're doubling down, we're tripling down, if you want, out on Imperial Parkway, and we will have a press release going out on these efforts of what we're doing and where we're going, but there's definitely, there's a lot of town to cover, there's a lot of county to cover. But on Imperial, we are going to keep a much closer eye. So for anybody that looks to drive reckless, or anybody that looks to drive careless, or anybody that wants to accelerate above the speed limit, you've been warned. We're gonna keep an eye on you. So I want to praise Sheriff Marcino and any efforts moving forward that we work with Lee County, as that is a county road. And I certainly want to congratulate Councilman Greg DeWitt for his promotion. He's a hometown kid, that's been a lifelong dream of his, and he's realizing his dream. And while we're gonna miss him here, we have to congratulate his efforts, and certainly the fire board shows well, very well, in making him their next chief. So we're gonna miss him, but obviously, every congratulations in the world to Greg. So with that, removal, approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Has been a motion in a second to approve the minutes? Further discussion?
There aren't any minutes.
No minutes?
Okay.
Okay? No minutes to approve. Public comment? Members of the public that would like to speak at this time? Please come forward.
Yes, I'll try to make it as brief...
No, that's great, but you are on a timer, so please.
Yeah, yes. Anyway, as I said before, I have about a lot of information, the detail, you know, I'm a detailed person, so if anybody wants details, see me. I've got, I think, most of the answers, not all of them, but a lot of them. Now, the one thing is, as I said before, you gotta remember that when the Railpact Act was done, 1970, the freight railroads wanted to get out of the passenger business, and so they, the thing was that Amtrak had first priority on moving passenger service on. Now, it's been some, shall I say, slack in that, but that's going to be probably, through the court system, more, shall I say, enforced. Because the freight railroads signed all this, including CSX, and CSX owns the right-of-way. It's not Seminole Golf that owns the right-of-way. So Seminole Golf is just the tenant, CSX is the people that signed all the agreements with Amtrak. So that's the situation, and basically, there's a lot of feeling, I think, in the Amtrak policies that they want to expand the passenger rail service, and of course, the opportunity is for commuter service, too, on the same track, like you have in other areas. And one other thing that another former city councilman, Richard Ferrer, suggested, is that we have a transit system, train and bus system operating as an entity. In other words, you have, like you have in Europe or other parts of the country, you have a token where you can get train to bus, bus to train, et cetera, and including commuter operation, because you're trying to move people, and especially if you're gonna have more density in this area, everybody's gonna get stuck in cars, and you can't build how many four lanes and six lanes, there's not that much space around.
Thank you very much, Alex. I appreciate it. Thank you for the information. Welcome, Ben, how are you?
Ben Hursen. First there were seven, now there are five. Please, keep up with your health records, make sure you see your physicians. I've heard of government light, but enough already, so please, hang in there till March, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just give me 60 seconds. I completely, the most important thing I wanted to say about last night was, you all know that it was successful due to good old-fashioned teamwork. Laura Taylor's whole staff, Parks and Recreation, and of course, the Special Events Committee, we all worked together. It was just great. I had, I was on, pardon me, I was on such a high when I got home last night, it rolled over to today. Like you were saying, it's such a good feeling, seeing smiling, happy, and kids, the snow slide was packed, Santa Claus, just, it was just wonderful. But I did want to give credit to...
Carrot rides and trains, oh, it was so...
To everyone from the staff and the city that helped, because when you were there, you know that, we all know that. We know what a great staff you all have. Thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
By the way, I don't know whether you want to put this on the record, I believe these glasses were on the floor, I believe it was the wife of the gentleman, was it Mr. Roche or something? Okay. I'll give them to you.
Great.
And if you're watching, we have them.
I'll text them.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. We are adjourned.